To the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under our eye, indivisible, with the ready justice of our law.
Would you also turn off your cell phones? That will, I guess we'll start out with each character. Chapter, start.
I am presenting this character award on behalf of Mrs. Engel and Mrs. Bridge from GLP. This student will be my student next year as she moves up to Eden Elementary. Julia Couster is a wonderful young learner. She's a very hard worker, dedicated student. Julia seems to understand that doing one's best is the most important thing. She always does her best and with a great attitude. She's very insightful about many things within our learning family. She works well with all of her classmates. She is kind, considerate, thoughtful, and a friend to all. I'm so glad she is a member of our second grade learning family. She's a great role model for us all. Written by her teacher, Mrs. Susan Engel. Please come forward, Julia Couster.
We have a student, one of our students, a fifth grade student. This girl is just a wonderful child. She's the kind of student who on her first day at Eden Elementary, as a third grader, gets off the bus and introduces herself to the principal. And just a wonderful child, always polite, always respectful. Ninety-five percent of the time she'll, you know when she's not feeling well because ninety-five percent of the time she is a ray of sunshine and she did something very special as of late.
Good evening. Jenna Jacobs has the biggest heart in a fifty-five-year-old body. When she heard that our librarian Vanessa Soul was going through battling breast cancer, Jenna immediately put her heart into action. She set up a lemonade stand to raise money for rescues with pink lemonade. And she decided that since she lives on the school view, there would be a lot of traffic on homecoming, so she set it up and dutifully went out in thirty degrees sleet and sold zero cups of lemonade. But her mother, her grandmother, her babysitter all chipped in and made donations to the cause. She also contacted Buffalo Bills and asked if they could make a donation, make an effort to honor this person that was very special, important to us. It took them a while to get back, so she was getting a little dejected thinking they might have forgotten about her. But they came through and sent pink pom poms and the pink skull cap and pink trading cards for both of her classes at the school to be shared with Miss Soul and the rest of our fellow classmates. So she is above and beyond the kind of character that we like to have here. Jenna Jacobs.
Good evening, everybody. It's my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Bell Hughes who will do the junior center high school character.
I teach at the state university and I always really enjoy interacting with the class and other students. The gym area is where we're doing our work too. And that's one good job. He's always, he comes into our room once a week on Wednesday helping boys learn how to use their computer. Beginning of the year September, we did a power play. The gym was a lot to help the boys get their power play, add things to it to make it more exciting. And in the hallway, he's always greeting my boys, high fiving them, saying hello, encouraging them. And one student, because Jim is our coordinator, he comes if a student has earned time or special time, extra time, and he helped that student maybe a movie about the weather and he was broadcasting. Jim had background for all of that, helped him figure out how like sound units faster and he talked about tornadoes and some ollies. And he's just a great kid and so I was wanting to give him that credit.
Just before you begin, let me introduce Jenna Phillips, who is here for Kendall this evening. Welcome Jenna.
Our request was not specific items for consensus.
Item B and Q1.
Anyone else?
Q1.
P and Q1. I will have following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum. A, C through P, and Q2 through 7.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Moving to B, approval of the minutes of the special board of education meeting October 24th, 2011.
Discussion, I pulled that one. I think the minutes are accurate for the meeting. I do believe we had a vote and approved in that meeting extending the 105H funding for confidential employees and administrators similar to what we had done with ETA. Is that not correct?
Yeah, we have to know where we're stopping.
Sure. Okay. All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, Q1. Talk about now or later. Make a motion. Actually, I'll start off. I'm going to make a motion to table Q1 until we can have a chance to review them. Discussion. I did, but I can't speak for Steve.
Well, there's some items about video conferencing that are a little bit unclear and we'll have to review those in a little more detail.
Yeah, some of the times the dates are just not reasonable in that documents. We need to take a look what's practical.
Excuse me, Mr. Serny, could you move the mic closer?
I can try. It's not hard to handle a thing for a moment. I'll do my best. Okay, so all in favor of tabling? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Colin, you want to talk about the one policy? Q6, core of ethics around higher practices? Can we put that on screen? Pull that one up? I think Colin said you didn't want to talk about that one. Several notes, Colin and Kristen are on the policy in legal committee, that's why.
If you want to talk about it, you have to withdraw it, correct?
Discuss anything in your time.
Well, you've already got it on thirty minutes seven.
Right. You just want to explain why policy.
Well, yeah, I thought it'd be helpful to explain the policy. And actually, the title of the policy is Disclosure of Relationship to Applicant for Employment and Subsequent Involvement in Hiring Process. Actually, if you scroll down.
See the section you want to talk about now?
There you go. There. I know it had to be around someplace here.
First, there's a title over there we need to insert. After, in the first line after hiring process, we have to insert "and is", so "and is related". I think one of the things we always reiterate here is that we want to continue to hire the best and the brightest for our district. That's our tradition here. And to help ensure that, to ensure that that continues, the goal of this policy is to make the process as fair and open as possible and to try to eliminate any potential conflicts of interest. And to avoid accusations of nepotism or cronyism or anything like that. And there are three main components to this delay of work once this policy is passed. First of all, when somebody applies for a job and they fill out an application, they're going to be asked to fill out the application. They have to disclose whether they have any friends or relatives that are current employees in the district. So that's step one. Step two is this actual policy, which will be part of the code of ethics for personnel. And it essentially requires all those who are involved in the hiring process in the interview process and in making the ultimate hiring decisions. It requires those people to fill out the list of applicants for the job and then to fill out a form, and I drafted a proposed form which administration is looking at. And those people have to identify from the list of applicants anybody they're related to or anybody that they're acquainted with. If they aren't that related to an applicant, they are required to recuse themselves, take themselves out of the hiring process and not have anything to do with it. If they're simply acquainted with an applicant, they have to disclose that fact and then it's up to their discretion. They have to use their best judgment and decide whether they can be fair in the process based on their relationship with the person or not and make that determination. That's the second component. And then finally, at the end, when Ron recommends the final candidate to the board for board approval, the board will ask for the application of the applicant. Will ask for these disclosure forms that were completed by people involved in the hiring process. The person's resume and the person's ranking amongst the candidates for that job. Those are the three components and we think that, the committee thinks it'll be an improvement to the current hiring process and will serve us well into the future.
All right, thank you. With that, I believe, move on to the section we'll say public comment. Again, we have two minutes for anyone who'd like to speak. And if you come up, would you like to identify yourself and your name and any affiliation that you may have.
Good evening. I'm Colleen Cott. I'm the ETA president and I'm addressing you this evening in response to the board president's request for direct communication between the teachers and the board. This request has prompted great concern and discussion among the faculty. If you were to listen just to the ideas and complaints of one teacher or one grade level or subject area, you're not going to get a balanced picture of what the school really needs. And it's human nature for an individual to convey their singular concerns coming across as if they're representing the entire faculty even though they're not intending to do so. And it also should be said that when a board member phones or tries to speak to a member out in public, that puts the teacher in a very awkward situation, all right? The teacher will probably feel uncomfortable saying no to a board member's request for a conversation because they may worry about what that refusal means. And then again, to discuss it, it's going to come back to the faculty and they're going to wonder what was said between the board member and that faculty member. And this can create uncertainty and possible mistrust among our colleagues, which we don't want to encourage. The teacher is basically in a no-win situation. So normally, if there's an issue that a teacher has, they take it directly to their building principal. And if they feel that the situation isn't handled to their satisfaction, they're then going to go to the next level, which is the superintendent. At that moment, they truly feel that it needs to be brought to the board's attention, then they will do so in a formal manner such as this. So this is the protocol and it's the natural tendency of teachers to want to support their administrators, okay? So they're very reluctant to respond to your direct request for this communication. So it's not that they don't want to. So while we applaud any open and honest communication between the faculty and the board of ed so that you can hear our concerns, we feel that it is in the best interest that we speak our concerns in association. Thank you for your time.
Excuse me, just to be clear, so you're saying you would like no teachers to speak with board members?
I'm just telling you the situation sometimes puts them in and it has already done that, which is why I felt that I needed to address this. And we have already talked to our faculty, their concerns will need to be brought as an association because of their possible personal inference they consider. Not that they can't talk to on a level, but sometimes it has created some animosity and we don't want to discourage or encourage that because we don't know what's being said.
Good. Do we know?
Good evening. My name is Paula Farrell and I'm a high school mathematics teacher and head building rep for the Eden Teachers Association. I have been asked on behalf of the music department to bring to the board's attention the conflict in the usage of the auditorium for the months of January, February, and March. Use of the auditorium is requested at the end of a previous school year by Ms. Tylock, who is a producer and director for Eden's musical. It is purposely done ahead of time because it's the only rehearsal space large enough to accommodate the one hundred-plus students involved in the musical. The musical is unique in the fact that involves lighting, sound equipment, set pieces, and a wooden dance floor that is not available anywhere else. The Eden Elementary building will be in use for their production and is therefore not available for us. There are about sixty-five students involved in the dance portion of the musical, making the auditorium the only viable safe environment for the students to work on their routines. Starting in December, set pieces, sound equipment, lighting equipment, set markings, pit setup, et cetera, all begin construction and are installed. This process takes three months and is complicated and highly organized. Once the process starts, it can't stop without completely derailing the structure that has resulted in many award-winning productions. The reason I am bringing this to the board's attention is that I've already presented this to the administration and I was told, quote, "As of this moment, the plan is to stay in the auditorium for the entire year", end of quote. It is my hope that once the board realizes the impact of maintaining meetings in the auditorium to the musical's success, you will reconsider conducting your monthly meetings for the months of January, February, and March at an alternative location. One possible location where the meetings could be temporarily relocated is a high school cafeteria. Past and current members of the board have supported Eden's musical program and can attest to the quality of these performances. I believe the timing of this request allows ample opportunity for the public to be informed of the change of venue. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you on this matter and I hope we can work together to resolve this scheduling conflict. Thank you.
Sorry to address that. We don't normally always address things, but this is something that I want to talk about later anyways. There's been, there's not been any discussions about evicting the school play or anything from the auditorium. It was brought up this week, excuse me?
Correct.
It was brought up this week around the scheduling conflict and we said, great, let's have it somewhere else. I don't know where this came from. And I guess this ties into the last conversation also is, these rumors get out there, I don't know how they get started, I don't know how they proliferate, but they do. And probably the fastest way to get an answer is if you think it's something that anyone on the board or the board in general is doing, ask us, okay? We'll tell you what's going on, we'll tell you what we're thinking. There certainly in this case has been no discussion about uprooting the school play. It's a very complex production and it needs the space that it needs. We're looking at alternatives for having a location and that's certainly the appropriate thing to do, so I don't know how these things have been started, but that's certainly not our intent, so.
Actually, the discussion, I think, certainly has been, correct me if I'm wrong, just to the faculty that we talked about.
Right.
Hey, that's not in the conversation I remember and I'm sorry that we brought this to your attention. Mr. Boggs knew that was going to be presented and I thought it was our understanding that we got an email from you that you have determined to keep these board meetings here. If that is not the case, we apologize, but that's the latest I've heard this afternoon. Thank you very much for that discussion.
No problem. Again, the discussion was that the meetings had been scheduled here and that's what we scheduled for the rest of the year. The discussion went forward and I think I made it clear that we had set that up since we got the request and we were looking at possible or current, whether there was an appropriate alternative or not.
But it was clear we were not going to do it here.
But we could have been. Think we're going to allow musicals.
Anyone else want to speak? Thank you.
Your business, except for resignation. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of confidential clerk typist Amanda Hanson be accepted effective November 11th, 2011. The board and the administration wish to thank Ms. Hanson for her service to the district.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Appointments, all appointments will not be effective and service to the district pursuing thereto shall not begin until there has been compliance with statute or the regulation of provisions for fingerprinting, certification, and clearance for employment. Appoint external auditor. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Toski Schaefer, PC, be appointed as the external auditor for the 2011-2012 school year.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Recall teaching assistant. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Sandra Pintapona, who is certified as a Level III teaching assistant, be recalled from layoffs as a Point IV FTE teaching assistant effective November 28th, 2011. Salary is based upon the teaching assistant scale step five.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Appoint temporary part-time bus mechanic foreman. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Donald Preschell, be appointed as a temporary part-time bus mechanic foreman in the transportation department effective November 9th, 2011. Salary is based on CSEA contract Level 13, step L10. Note, Mr. Preschell will be filling in on an as-needed basis in the medical absence of Mr. Janko.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Increase hours for bus driver. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the hours for bus driver Julianne Blenko be increased from 1.5 per day to 5.0 per day effective November 9th, 2011.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Increase hours for bus driver. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the hours for bus driver Vincent Vacco be increased from 6.5 per day to 6.75 per day effective November 9th, 2011.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Approve AFS overnight trip. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, AFS overnight trip to Monticlier High School in Monticlier, Vermont, January 26th through 29th, 2012 be approved.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Approve technology overnight trip. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the world of technology overnight trip to St. Paul, Minnesota to participate in the Donnie Smith Chopper Challenge, March 22nd through 26th, 2012 be approved.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Approve Model UN overnight trip. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a Model UN overnight trip to Chicago for an international competition, December 8th through 11th, 2011 be approved.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Approve FBLA overnight trip. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, an FBLA overnight trip to Chickewa, New York to facilitate team building activities and prepare for future competitions, December 2nd through 3rd, 2011 be approved.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Approve standard workday and reporting resolution for appointed officials. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the standard workday and reporting resolution for the treasurer be approved as presented. Note, this was approved for the Board of Education at the May 3rd, 2011 meeting, however, ERS requires it to be approved again in the attached format.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Approve participation in the Erie Two Chautauqua-Cateragus-Bosse's Benefit Alliance. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education authorize Eden Central School District to participate in the Erie Two Chautauqua-Cateragus-Bosse's Benefit Alliance per the attached plan document.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Accept donation of wood. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, donation of approximately $250 worth of finished and rough cut made from lumber be accepted from Timothy Roberts. Note, the wood will have to be picked up at Mr. Roberts' address in Appleton, New York.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Adopt revised 2011-2012 school calendar. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2011-12 revised school calendar be adopted due to a change in testing dates by the New York State Education Department. Note, this change is necessitated by a change in recommendation of the state department and the need to move forward with common core training math that is required to be completed by the end of the school year.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Approve wrestling overnight trip. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a wrestling team overnight trip to Jamestown, New York for the holiday classic tournament, December 16th and 17th, 2011 be approved.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Motion carries. We have a bit of a request for a 10-minute presentation by Mr. Allman on the ETA for his retirement.
First of all, I'd like to clarify what it says. It says ETA for presentation for early retirement. It's not early retirement, it's for an incentive for retirement, not early retirement, so I'd like that clarified immediately. I think just clarify that, thank you. Okay, this year the Eden Teachers Association Executive Board approached me to put together an incentive package that could be cost savings. This was asked by me to do this due to the buzz of presentation that was received at the November 7th Board of Education meeting. I would like to give each of one of you the proposal, and I'd like to go through it and spend a little time on it. If you have any discussion, I will answer any questions for you. Do you have this electronic projector? No? Okay. Howard, and Mr. Brenner, I'm sorry. In closing, a final proposal for the Eden Teachers Association detailing a potential savings to the school district. The ETA suspects that if incentives offered, the Board of Education, several teachers would possibly retire in June 2012. With these additional retirements, the district would realize a savings of over $10,053 per teacher, as estimated the first year, and much more this following year. These savings would take place even after a replacement teacher with a master's degree has been hired. This is how we put the proposal together, so that we're looking at replacing each of the teachers if they were retired, and again, that's the numbers you see on the second page. Upon your approval of this current proposal honored before December 9th, 2011, we are requesting an extension of our date to submit letters of intent for the purpose of retirement from each central schools, from our contract date of December 31st to January 15th, 2012. This will allow our teachers, who are not planning to retire this year or next, to take advantage of this early retirement offer. Please carefully consider this proposal, as the ETA is trying to find a way for Eden Central School District to realize substantial savings in the 2012-2011 school budget year and beyond. Thank you for considering this incentive for our teachers and savings options for the taxpayers of the Eden Central School District. Respectfully submitted, Eden Teachers Association, November 21st, 2011. If you go to the second page, please, where it says assumptions in the proposal. First of all, basically, there's four things that you see there that are pretty constant, and there's not much change at all that happens, and these are major things that we really put into it, but simply you also have to assume. And sometimes it's someone that's something that we don't want to do, but into there and it's given. Letter A, workman's compensation costs will remain the same for whoever's hired. Secondly, letter B, health insurance cost remains the same. Approximately, we put in $12,400 per teacher. Possibly, this could decrease if new staff members came on board, or as you lose staff members. Thirdly, employee contribution rate, contribution stays constant. This is approximately 11% for next year, it's not a given yet, but that's what the employees' contribution rate will be for teachers. FICA costs remain the same at 7.65 for everyone's salary. Go to the next page, please. The following estimates are based on four teachers taking advantage of the proposal retirement incentive. First of all, we've got an estimate there of current salary, and we multiply times four, we got year one, year two in the column you can see. We put in the employee contribution rate and the FICA rate. We put in total cost, total cost for year one, approximately, if you keep the staff on board, is approximately $379,680. We're looking at possibly you hiring new staff members, new salaries would be approximately only $158,000 compared to the $320,000. The employee contribution rate in FICA would come out to approximately $29,468. The total cost would come out to $187,468. We have the word annual savings there, $192,212. Well, in the proposal itself, there's an incentive there, and it equals, based on four teachers, approximately $112,000. A sick leave, approximately $40,000, also based on four teachers. A real savings equals approximately, subtract all that out from all that money, comes out to $40,212 if four teachers would retire, or $10,053 for one. And the next year, savings would be greater due to the fact that you have a lower employee contribution rate and lower FICA rates. Last page, please. Summary points, we are proposing a $28,000 payment for each retired teacher to be placed in his or her 403B or health reimbursement account. As you can see from the estimates, savings in just the first year was $40,212. This cost remains, retains the current staff for the following year to be rehired. In addition, this would give the school board more flexibility in planning staffing due to allocations for coming up in the 2012-2013 year. Please feel free to discuss this, review this, or ask any questions of the figures presented to this proposal with us at your earliest convenience. Again, I come to you tonight pleading to you because you pleaded with us at the November 7th meeting, tell us how bad the state of the state is. You're telling us that money is going to be tight. We're reading in the Buffalo news every school district is suffering. I would like you to please take this into consideration, and not only the savings for the Teachers Association, but possibly consider it for all of your other unions that you have out there, your administration, your CSEA, et cetera. I think that would be a substantial savings. I wouldn't stand here and say this tonight in November of 2011, if Hammer Central Schools last year didn't lose as many staff members as they did due to a retirement incentive similar to this. I urge you to please call those two board members, the President and the Vice President Board. The Vice President was here in October at your meeting, she sat right over here, was Penny Martin-Palace. I urge you to also call Dr. Cockins, she is President of the Board. I communicated with her, and she said yes, there was a house savings last year. So, at this time, again, I say thank you, and I would like to have you ask any questions. I'd like to just basically say let this impact, incentive have an impact, as we strive together to work for Eden Central Schools taxpayers.
I'd like to ask you two quick questions. So you're saying net savings is $40,000?
Yes, if four teachers would go.
Four teachers, $40,000. And how do you account for the loss of experience in the calculation?
Are you looking at loss of money, or are you looking at loss of experience?
I say for $40,000, you're going to give up 60 or 80 years of experience?
A normal staff member's about 30, 35 years.
I mean, teaching experience.
Right.
Right, so they're at least been here 18 years, and replacing them with a very mature person. Is that, that's what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying, but I think if you find some very experienced staff members out there, there's a lot of people out there right now with jobs. Okay? The market is very strong, it's not weak. And I'm talking all teaching areas, K through 12. I think you could ask Mr. Boggs, or you could ask Mr. Schaefer, you could ask Mr. Graff, or Mrs. Griff, how many staff applied for certain types of jobs that you had open last year in this district, and they would give us some numbers, and it was extracted.
Alright. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
Okay, I hope that, again, you do take this into consideration, and you please respond to us by December 9th. Thank you very much.
Lisa, if you're interested.
Bandgat, remember you don't bandgat conduct in your internal audit, which was assessed and updated on October 25th. They interviewed all business officers, staff, superintendent, technology department, transportation, building ground, and food service departments. I will set up an audit committee after we receive and review their initial report. Dick Carron from Travel and Associates will be meeting with the Infrastructure Committee on December 6th at 6:00 p.m. to provide an update on the status of the scope for project closeouts for SDMT number two and the NEXL. Dick Carron and Dave Marlin will introduce priorities for the $1 million project that the board has been putting together. Surplus block did run out for Block 161, which was accessed in the External Safety Board Committee, bid opening is December 8th at 10:00 p.m. The audit committee met on November 14th, and discussed the draft response to the external auditor's recommendations. They agreed with the response which was then submitted to the State Education Department in the State Control. Last month, we discussed recommendations of the external auditor, who were requested positive analysis for the recent hours complaint auditor to review the test and agency checks. Here's the analysis, trying to discuss in this time, which we should do. She can see it costs about $600 for her to review all the payroll, and back to the classroom.
Was the current cost on that?
Pardon?
Will we spend it currently for that?
She's doing about 11 hours a week, the estimated cost is about $21,000. This would be for about three more hours. I'm sorry, I have to have 11 hours a week.
Any other questions, or?
Yeah. She's got to be able to catch the hours.
Any other questions? Okay. Any others? You want to acknowledge the background of reputation? Steve Riwan?
Um, reputation question, I want to take, I want to take a question.
Okay, so we'll, we'll run the, on the menu right of board, December.
And then I would also have to review the budget projection paper for the man in November 7th. In the box panel, we have our estimate, estimated revenues and expenses for 2012. Our estimated revenues will be about $24 million, while our estimated expenditures will be about $24,500.
So this is where you expect us, this is your best guess of where we're going to come in this year?
Yeah, and I prepared those beginning of August, yes, probably have almost $500,000 down, but expenditures, spending revenue.
So the column in the box is current year?
Correct. The blue highlighted box, that's 2012, 13, for the taxes, the first two items, projecting the two percent increase. Stay date, I'm projecting a decrease based on enrollment. Everything else we made public savings. We have about a $24 million revenue versus revenue, and all things being equal, we're estimating, and the expenditures will be about 25.7 million. Leaving out all the $1.8 million down, expenditures. And 2013, 14, getting 24 million dollars in revenue, and $26.8 million in expenses, leaving out $2.7 million.
I, I had asked Lisa to present this again, because after the last presentation, I, I was confused on some of the numbers, I was on the wrong year, the way it was being explained. So, so I thought it was worthwhile, I know, I know some others didn't quite get it. I thought it was important for us to, again, to talk about being on the same page. We're, we're looking at for next year, 1.7 to 1.8 million dollar deficit, so it's a big gap. And I know I said it a few times before, but we now have a number that at least tells us how big the gap is and how big the problem is. So with that, we need to have everyone be thinking about how we can work together in a constructive way to try and figure out how to close this gap, because for the most part, not for the most part, we are pretty much bound by these numbers. The tax gap bounds the revenue side, and the only thing you can do is work on the expenditure side, which is bad news. So, it's not, it's not that we've made any of these numbers up, it's pretty much the hand that's been dealt us. So, we ask all of you to start thinking, we have a pretty big group here tonight, to start thinking about how we can work together on this problem, because it's a problem we all have to work on together to solve. And there's a lot of choices that have to be made, whether we want to or not, but we need to, we need to work on together, we need to have as much information as we can, as much cooperation as we can, and everything else. So, I ask everyone to be willing to work on that process with us. Any others? Thank you.
I just have a couple nights. One, I'd like to take the opportunity to congratulate the girls' volleyball team for a classic championship, state championship. I'm sure everybody does realize that that's the ninth state championship for that program, and the third in a row, a third in a row for that program. Again, congratulations. I also would like to, I guess, comment, and if you have something you want to share, please.
I just wanted to give a quick thank you from the girls' girls' volleyball team for giving them permission to go to their New Jersey tournament back in October. They all appreciated the experience, and that helped them. This test began as they won states again for the ninth year, as was just mentioned. They also wanted to send a big thanks to the school for the send-off on Friday and all the support.
You certainly earned the right to make those trips, that's for sure.
Thanks, gentlemen. I also have, I didn't, I don't know when, when you wanted to discuss that, it's the meeting location, I was prepared to explain that further. Carol did an outstanding job in explaining the reasons why the move is a deep move. I guess my question is, is do we, you know, you want to move, and wherever you're moving to?
Clearly, we need to. I don't know, I think the question was suggesting the elementary school, I don't know if it's tied up for all those dates, we can see which ones it's available, which ones it's not. If that doesn't work, then I think the next best solution is to come to cafeteria. Any other, any thoughts?
Yeah, I was thinking the auditorium at the elementary school, because that's the sort of the format, I think the audience tonight will have their time spending in the cafeteria, so we want to make our meeting successful. And in order to do that, we have to have room, you know, oddly, if it's possible to have in the elementary school, that would be my preference, for those reasons, especially during the budget season.
Yeah, the only, the only kind of question we'll have to check into is, is the rehearsal time out there for the elementary musical, as well as, we're, somebody else has to say what you want to say.
Just last one.
How about the cafeteria, if we just opened a divider?
I'd like to, well, it's more of a, what's wrong with cafeteria? I think new seating is better, I think for people, we're going to need seating, mostly if you have the, I just felt seating. Yeah, I'm sorry, I exceeded my force rule?
We are, we are also using the elementary auditorium, and the fifth, the elementary is recessed, so we're a foot down.
Okay, well, we'll still be scheduled for, we're going for hours.
So we're all paying with, everyone's all paying with either the elementary or the cafeteria? Okay. Let me, I wanted to continue the, the process of sharing with you, the, a little bit more about the core, kind of core, and, because we are not going to be able to do that, again, maybe we can use a better mic, because we have four. We have a... Better, might, we have four, um, we have a, the cell filling in, thank you. Um, Howard, I forgot that you didn't ask him, because Mrs. Carter, in the while we're doing that, if we could, Mrs. Carter, her family, her thoughts and prayers, her mother lost away, um, on the weekend, she's, that's, those, I couldn't run that further, definitely. So, um, I'm going to attempt to, uh, share this, uh, video with you. I'm not, uh, sure that the sound will be, uh, any better than it was last month because again, we can count the, uh, the, uh, I think, let's, let's try that.
No, it's not a word. It's ridiculous. Not a word.
Okay, well, well, I apologize.
For the first time, America.
Why tell us what you're reading?
On the card, apologize for that, uh, you know, Mrs. Carter and I discussed it and, uh, we'll, we'll get it. Um, the last, uh, piece of, uh, presentation, uh, or my, my, uh, report tonight, Mrs. Carter and I wanted to, uh, just walk you through, uh, the preliminary, uh, action plan for the, the goal, district goals. Uh, we said we would have a, at least a preliminary, uh, report, uh, this evening for you and, and keeping in mind that this document is a working document and will be, uh, ongoing as we go throughout the year. And as, um, has been suggested that we involve as many faculty and staff as we can as we go through the process. And also keep in mind that, uh, we're using our Race to the Top goals and work that we have, uh, signed on with the State Education Department to, uh, spearhead the student achievement portion of this through the network teams that Bosse will provide, working with our inquiry teams, Angel up. I would ask, um, Mrs. Carter, just to take us through the highlights of goal number one and, and student achievement, um, improvement of student achievement.
So I believe when we started working, we broke down first with A, C. So we looked at raising the number of students at a master level. We started doing things, um, we're focusing a lot on working to implement the Common Core standards. We have actually no choice to do that with Race to the Top. We're making a shift, as you can see, or not here with the video, but we're shifting to the Common Core standards. So that's where we're starting with our current actions is shifting to our standards, to the Common Core. We're working with our Bosse's Race to the Top Network to meet the goals through that plan. And I know you didn't want us to go in great detail, as this plan is just a start, but we don't have a lot of detail with it. Um, we're getting ready to prepare for how the assessments are going to change for this year. We know that there's going to be some new types of questions on the test. So as we're trying to bring our students up towards mastery level, we have to start addressing the fact that the assessments are going to look a little different again. We're preparing our staff for how to deal with the different types of questions that are going to be on the test. For example, our teachers have to prepare the students for questions that they're going to teach the students that are within their curriculum. They're preparing students for questions that aren't on the curriculum. They're going to be field test questions that won't count, but they're questions that are basically trying out on the students. And there's growth questions that students aren't supposed to know, and those will all be covered in on assessments, and they typically have not been before. So it's building a different type of test taking strategy for students that they have not had to worry about before. Stamina, what do you do with questions that you don't know? How long do you spend on those questions? How do we teach students to deal with questions? And we have students that don't necessarily always know what they don't know. So it's a whole lot of test taking strategies, so we're trying to prepare for those kinds of things. Um, we continue with our ongoing academic data review, looking at the different types of data we have. Um, we have more data this year than we've had in the past. We have our state assessments that we look at, where have our students done well, where do they not do well, what can we do differently? We have our AIMS Web data. Um, one of the things that you'll see in future action columns, we've actually extended AIMS Web, and we're benchmarking all the way up to eighth grade this year and progress monitoring our students in seventh and eighth grade in addition to K through sixth in areas of ELA and math. Now, on the board visit today, Mrs. Pinker, I actually got to stop in and see some of our teachers actually being trained on the progress monitoring aspect on that, so we can actually get some ongoing data. The state assessments are great. They give us some autopsy data so that we get to see how our students did at the end of last year, but it doesn't give us that ongoing data to see where are they going on a more regular basis. So we are extending that data for this year. So all the way over baseline, we can continue to get more data on an ongoing basis. Um, we're looking for the future for dealing with how do we raise our mastery level scores. We're hoping to expand our enrichment honors programs, three through 12. We continue to work on building that ability to not only get data from different sources, but how do we use that data to improve student achievement? We need to continually offer as much staff development as we can in different areas to help prepare our teachers and our administrators on the Common Core, the changes in the assessments, improving instructional strategies. So we're looking at different ways to offer staff development, which is always a challenge because we have an awful limited amount of staff development time. One of the things we're going to be, starting something in a more aggressive fashion this year through Race to the Top is our inquiry teams, and I think that's where you'll see a more detailed implementation of this plan as we're having the inquiry teams through the Bosse's network that they will come in and our, we have five teams actually through our inquiry teams that are focused on our Race to the Top deliverables, our Board of Education Goals, and our CDEP Goals. And we combined them all and created five inquiry teams that will meet the goals for achievement, and it will bring in all of the stakeholders, the teachers, the administrators, and various staff members, so we can start brainstorming more specific strategies on how to reach these goals. Because these are fairly vague and general strategies on how to get there. So our inquiry teams will now take this work and figure what will it take to actually get to those goals. And we had a lot of conversations at CDEP on what was the next step and what would be the venue, on how to get that opportunity to make those strategies and come up with what needs to be in place to reach those goals. And it will be those inquiry teams. Our first meeting for the inquiry teams is a training for our building principals. They'll each facilitate one of those inquiry teams, and that's happening on December 8th. One of the interesting challenges, I think, for us as a district and for many districts is to really communicate the value of assessments to our students and our parents. I think it's an easy sell when you're dealing with regions because they're connected to their graduation. Um, it's not so much of an easy sell when we're dealing with our three through eight assessments. They're not necessarily tied to their grades, they're not tied to a graduation rate. So finding the value to the three through eight assessments, what it means for them, what it tells us as a school, and really communicating that to parents is something we need to work on, I think, for the future to really have an impact on improving our comprehensive assessment results. And we need to continue to involve our teachers and our administrators in an ongoing action plan. And as we find things working, doing more of that, and when things aren't working, finding out what we need to do differently. We have a, an awful lot of good people at the delivery level that can give us a lot of insight on what do they feel is causing an impact on our student achievement and what needs to be changed. We need to increase opportunities for teaching staff to work collaboratively. And this is also an interesting challenge on the timeframe of our days and limited staff development, giving them an opportunity to work collaboratively, teach us, um, to discuss teaching strategies and learning within especially our core areas in mathematics and ELA, where we're finding those areas we're trying to focus on when we look at our CDEP Goals and some of the areas we're working on in our test scores. Um, we heard, heard you talk about how we expanded AIMS Web, so we're hoping to use the data from AIMS Web, K through eight, and our informal reading inventories to assist in making instructional decisions as opposed to just our one-time state assessments. We're implementing instructional support teams and data teams, K through 12. I always start with the beginning of the school year doing our data analysis, but we need to do that more in an ongoing fashion. So our building principals are implementing instructional support teams and data teams so that they're meeting, looking at the data regularly and having conversations with their teachers and their staff to see what students are getting the services they need, what students are not getting the services they need, and making sure those strategies are in place. We're implementing AIMS Web benchmarking and progress monitoring in grades seven and eight, so we have that training that happened today. And we are hoping to implement a more structured AIS program at the seven through 12 building. They started last year working on the more formalized RTI plan. And as we work through that, we need to make that program more structured. So that's where we are in, um, letter A of that goal. And we know that goal for the Board of Education is to have a 10% increase and just, you know, that's based on the students we have currently that we are testing. That is approximately bringing about eighty-four of our students up to a level four or maybe five percent or higher.
Say the name, please?
Based on students we are currently testing, it's an approximately eighty-four kids that we want to move into the mastery range to meet that goal. In the area of B and C, they're very similar. Um, we know that right now, we currently in grade three through eight, the assessment data, we are ranked in thirteen out of twenty-eight schools in ELA, so we're not so far off from the goal of being in ten in hearing counting. We're fourteen out of twenty-eight in math. Um, and looking at the data, we are about 2.4 index points from, maybe number ten for ELA and 4.6 index points in math. Um, in order to reach those goals, we are going to continue to implement the Common Core standard. Again, we're going to work with the inquiry teams to look at specifically in the areas of ELA and math, what do we need to focus on, pull from our stakeholders, what are the core strategies and things that they need to put in place to have that impact for student achievement. We are working in a pod, if you work with me, often hear we talk about the pod here in the pod with North Collins and Orchard Park. They are in our pod for Race to the Top, and we work with them on different training options, Common Core. We share our model with them. So we're hoping to work with them in the next couple of months to share some of our Bosse's training opportunities. We are going to revise our staff development plan to meet our current needs. We're going to set up some visits to the top ten school districts to see some of the programs they're using and some of the things they're doing differently or the same that we're using to see if we can tap into them instead of re-inventing, you know. We just completed and updated the CDEP plan for this current school year, so we are going to roll that out to the entire district so people know what specific goals in each of the areas or departments or subject areas they work on so that they know what goals we're working on and tie that in with the inquiry teams. We want to increase opportunities for our staff to work collaboratively to discuss teaching and learning in the core areas. And I think some of the differences you see in the letter C as opposed to letter B is that we hopefully meet goal B and move towards C, we're going to have to start looking at, now that we phased in the Common Core standards, we have to start preparing our school for the technology-based national assessment program because they're planning on moving to the park assessments, so it'll be another change in the assessment program. And they're planning on them being technology-based, where students can take all their assessments on computers. We're going to have to study and look at the budget, budget impact for the increased costs of that due to the technology impact. We're going to have to review our staff development plan at that point again to make sure that we can assist our teachers to prepare for those new national assessments and how they look differently and how we prepare our students for those. And hopefully at that point, we'll have revised our curriculum and are ready to start preparing common benchmark assessments that are more aligned to the park assessments. And I think it definitely works. I think we'll have some more very specific strategies from our inquiry teams.
Question, have you been on that goal at all? Just, I'd like to see more specifics and timelines on some of this. We don't have any, most interpretation plans should be, uh, clear tangible deliverables on them and should have timeframes, and that's, you know, lacking down here, so we need to work on that, get that, get that figured out.
Some of it will be dependent on, again, inquiry number teams, party, so we'll go most simply.
Sure.
So I have their, their timeline, so.
Most of the others, I think we'll do some things.
So the inquiry team, I'm a little confused about all the different teams. The inquiry teams are Bosse's teams?
Well, Race, they're, they're teams within our district, but Race to the Top, Race to the Top was obviously the grant that we received from New York State. That one went to Bosse, so they facilitated, some of the things that they facilitated are our training for Common Core. They also facilitate the inquiry teams. We get each district gets so many days with the Bosse's facilitators, so they'll start the process with us.
So the inquiry teams are within our own district, but facilitated by Bosse's?
They'll be, the beginning will be facilitated through them, so they'll start the actual training of our administrators, and then they'll start working with each of our teams. And then the goal is that they can build capacity so that we can work within our own district to continue the work on our own.
So those inquiry teams are different than the, than the network team of Bosse's?
Yes.
Yes.
Bosse's network teams are leading the, uh, inquiry teams. Network team is working with every, all three schools and pod. Each pod has a, pod around, Orchard Park, each pod, they, we have worked to, we'll work with the top, all three inquiry teams, all three schools.
Their network team works to help plan all of this work.
So Bosse's Race to the Top network teams are Bosse's, and the instructional support team is possibly the inquiry team? Is the inquiry, the instructional support team, is the inquiry team or?
No, the instructional support team is a building based in that you're working at
Okay, um, let me, uh, pick up and carry to, uh, to goal two. Um, and goal two was by July 1, 2012, about the work group plan to change language offerings and offerings to better prepare students in a more competitive world and provide language emergency offerings, language conversion offerings for the elementary building. Um, some of the current things that we've already looked at, at, uh, doing, we've exposed the even school community to Chinese culture and language through assembly program. Uh, we've surveyed, uh, the Jewish High School students and parents regarding the whole offerings. We've met with the local department, uh, members to discuss the goal and how we proceed and continue to work with them, as well as having the administrative level to discuss the movement and the process. Some of the future actions that I, in number one will be helpful, I think, Mr. Searney helped clarify this for us this week, is that we're looking at, at a depth clarify this for us this week, is that we're looking at a definition, and I think that's caused some, some confusion, so we just need to re-clarify the definition that the Board has, change of language offerings, so we know where we're, which goal, which way we're going with the goal as the committee begins to work. And need to also complete the definition for immersion offerings and what that, that goal is, so we'll be asking for that. We're quite, I know we clarified, Mr. Searney clarified change in language offerings after the, I mean, no drop of language, but we just need a little bit more, I guess, guidance as to where the Board would like us to go with that goal.
This was not, this was not a board goal, this is a board administration.
Correct.
The Board of Administrators all over the world when we had this discussion, so I'm not sure, whatever, off on the understanding of it. Now, maybe the word change, as I said before, is probably not appropriate, it's more like evaluate or understand or something like that, but you're all in that discussion. Same thing you were.
Right, and we read the immersion pieces being enrichment, most of the immersion of the region against experience in foreign language in Japan. But I think there was a variety of interpretations of what change offering, change language offerings meant. And again, I thank you for clarifying that, that it wasn't, didn't mean a drop, but as you clarified now, even more that it was to review and understand that that was what kind of means.
Well, I think it's to make sure that, that our current offerings are serving, serving the needs of our, of our students. And if they're not, other ones that should be, that should be considered. That, that was really also evaluate, we can identify if there are any gaps in languages that, that might be needed in the future and recognition.
So realize that we're evaluating existing programs. I mean, I realize we're all there, but there was a difference in interpretation.
This is sort of the existing programs, I think it's evaluating our students' needs, what best, what best suits our students.
So we're not evaluating current programs, we're evaluating what?
Current, I think it's the board, yeah.
Okay, it's current, current. So we're evaluating current program and evaluating the needs of our students and so on.
It takes place every year, it's most special what the kids need when they have a goal.
And then, yeah, thank you for that. And we're okay with immersion being enrichment?
enrichment introduction, get them started. I mean, I mean, at first, at first that was me, it was just me, so.
Well, my thought was that it meant that we're going to be looking at offering language at an earlier stage.
Some form of it or somehow, right.
Perhaps in the elementary school, but that was my idea of that.
The discussion was mainly around that, you know, we need to start kids sooner into the language program if it wasn't English selected or chosen, if it's still look at all languages to be, and the kids involved or the other.
Right, I think we had a discussion about starting with, starting with enrichment and moving to, I don't know, actual offerings or something like that. I think that's where the question. Okay. Any else, anybody like that? We will begin to work on that, that piece. The next goal. I have to deal with long-range, long-range planning, and again, I will read through all this with you, the current actions, things we're doing, those are things that have already been complete or are partially complete and we need to finish them. Future actions, there's a list in the center that are things that we need to identify and or complete, which we'll be working on through this year. The recommendation, the administration would like to make a recommendation, though we take a look at trimming that 10-year goal or plan period to five years and make that five-year ongoing revised every year. We're always going out five years because things like our facilities plan, technology plan, curriculum planning, state, you're likely to get a year from state, it's case of our, we have, we don't have quite as much data, if you will, for going out 10 years with facilities, technology, those things that were important, so we suggest that we move that to five years and have it updated annually so it's not always, we always have five years.
Well, I agree, the ongoing part, let's talk about what I think 10 years, our, our reason for 10 years is we have significant changes in our population and need, and there's a trend here going on, and if we don't start planning so many years out in advance, we're going to be, we're in trouble. Too many facilities or not enough facilities or staff or anything else, so, yeah, sure, some things like technology, maybe not even go out five, five years, there's changes to the task, but a lot of things like facilities, gosh, there's a lot of stuff we see in how we fix and build facilities, get them approved, get funding, anything else, ten years, too long on that.
So we'll, so we'll attempt to go with five, five to 10?
Yeah, as far as, as far as we can.
Okay, that's good, as long as we're, we have, we have a range that we can work in and not get as much.
Sure, yeah, it's anything you guess for technology 10 years from now, it's not going to mean anything, but, but things like population changes aren't going to be a lot, you need to make sure that comes back in.
Okay.
So you can hear him ask outside my 40 trade, I was just trying to stay.
That's, that's not, that's, that's a, that's a good calculation. Appreciate that, who else to begin that, begin that work. And the last goal was, was four is to improve the constituent communication. I conducted a lot of that activities programs that are in addition to traditional, that is social house board meetings. And we just listed on those pages, things that we're already doing, really, so you all have those for your, your, your information. And then certainly future action, that can be wherever we wanted to go, and as I think as we go through the year, the community may want to, more, make more modifications, the board members may want to add, add things, delete things, but those are eight areas that we would make suggestions that we're moving forward to. I will already be making arrangements to meet with, there's two groups in town, senior groups, and I'll be meeting with, point three, budget and post-budget approval, as well as the town board. We would encourage you to share with us any expertise that you may have in, so have you invited into, as board members, to share with our classes or talk to classes in particular. I know participation government often has, we've ever talked about, we've talked, format integration with the board, so I encourage you to get that, as well as, there's other things there, board education, town meetings, so if you have an opportunity, we'd like to talk a little bit about everyone's thoughts and hopes are, to build visibility. The next one, President, the town activities, I think go overall, we did a pretty good job there. There's always, there's always a great, great bit for all of us regarding, regarding developing the president job activity. Certainly we're going to have multiple opportunities coming 2012, it's all the most significant for us to leave. Board members present at the budget hearing, we've discussed the last two years, we have to have full complement of board members, so we recommend that we have a clear, suggesting maybe, I know other boards do it with their neighboring districts, it maybe doesn't necessarily have to just work their towns, but you may want to look at having some joint, a couple of joint meetings with other boards, just have some conversations around what the future is bringing. And I'm going to move back, I think I've certainly shared this in my weekly memo, moved back to offer, all fact, it's a chance to meet with me individually and share ideas, thoughts, the variety of opportunities, it's open-ended, and we'll be starting those in a couple weeks. And that's, Chris, clear?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm also, thank you.
Anybody else have anything that want to talk about?
For the board?
Why do you have the?
We have a report. We have a report from the legal policy committee. According to district policy, we, the board, are responsible for hiring and managing the legal services used by the district. And the committee was asked some time ago to look into the current options available in that area and report back with some recommendations. And I began, I think several months ago, by doing an informal audit of past billing by the current firm utilized, Hodgson-Russ. And we then, with Ron's assistance, identified essentially all firms with expertise in education law, which are currently providing services to districts in Erie County. I contacted five of those providers. Kristin and I then met with four of them, including current council, Hodgson-Russ. The providers that we did meet with are currently providing services to more than 90% of the districts in Erie County, so if they were a major player in education law in this county, they were considered. We came up with two finalists after that.
Colin, who were the four you did talk to?
We, Hodgson-Russ, Harris Beach, Harder Seacrest, and Thomas DeBois were the four. We came up with two finalists from that group, Harris Beach and Harder Seacrest. Both of those firms submitted detailed information on their services, their attorneys, their rates. We then asked you this week to meet with both of those firms, so perhaps you can provide your input as well after I'm done. First, in terms of rates, both would charge lower rates than current council. Harris Beach would be about 14% lower, Harder Seacrest is about 11% less. Both firms are large law firms that cover all areas of education law. In terms, they were specifically asked, you know, which attorneys in your firm would do our work. Harris Beach would use two, Tracy LaParti and Jeff Weiss. Jeff Weiss concentrates in special ed litigation and has a very good reputation in that. Tracy would handle most of everything else. Both attorneys have about 10 to 12 years of experience. I believe both have past experience with the district and are familiar with some of the administration. For Harder Seacrest, they would primarily use Ron Mendrick, who has about 30 years experience. He's AV rated by Morrendale Hubbell, which is the highest rating. He's very well-known in education law and speaks across the state at various seminars on education law. So that's kind of my overview. You know, also, after going through that policy, hiring policy, it occurred to me that, you know, in the spirit of full disclosure in the hiring process, I should say I have no relatives, acquaintances, or friends at either of these law firms. And I think Kristin can say the same thing, and I think the whole board can say the same. So what's good for the goose is good for the gander. I also want to make very clear, and I would recommend that we keep Hodgson-Russ in place for the current ETA contract negotiations, so as not to impede or delay that process. So just jumping back to cost, we, the committee, looked at some other aspects of cost. In addition to hiring one of these firms at a lower billing rate, we think we can achieve further cost savings in, in legal services by installing some controls and being more judicious about how and when a legal counsel is used. And, and also by performing a regular audit of all legal bills. And I'm volunteering myself to do that. We simply asked that from now on, the board be copied on all legal bills, and, and I'll go through them, and if we have an issue, we're going to contact a council and hash that out. I would add also that whatever decision we make here, it's not a 10-year decision. It's a simple agreement for professional services that can be revisited at any time. And I would suggest that we do it again in July, at, at the time of reorganization, and thereafter that we do it on an annual basis. So I would ask Steve and/or Kristin for your thoughts this time.
Okay, yes, we did meet with, with four, and Harris Beach seemed to have some specific expertise in the area of special ed litigation and general special ed, which was, which is an important aspect of our legal considerations, so that was appealing to me. Of the two, Harder Seacrest and Harris Beach, they were there, both, as Collins said, full-service firms, and that was something that was important to our administrators, not to have to jump around looking for, who do we call for this, who do we call for that, so we tried to take that into consideration as well. Another aspect of Harder Seacrest, Ron, is it Hendrick?
Yes.
Hendrick, thank you, is a board member at a school district just the side of Rochester, so he brings a really interesting perspective, coming from, from the legal aspect and also being an active board member, so I think that brings insight in a number of areas, and that was appealing to me. So those were the two that.
As Collins said, after, after those two met, they asked me to go to speak to Harris Beach or Harder Seacrest and get a take note, I thought both two pros. Both seem very well qualified. The thing I did not like about Harris Beach was I did get the impression that we're going to be handed off quickly to one of the junior associates for, for regular billing rates, that kind of concerned me. So I didn't really want to go that way. The gentleman from Harder Seacrest, Ron, was very experienced, and one of the things I thought he could really help us with was, as this Ron knows, we always have debates about the role of the board and where the line is and that kind of thing, and it's a, it's a good debate, it's an argument. This gentleman has advised administrations for a long time, has been on boards for a long time, so he has own views of the world and could really help us with some of those discussions, so I thought that would be a very valuable force from a district perspective. I was leaning towards, towards Harder Seacrest to do that work, and it was pretty clear that he was going to be the guy doing it versus Harris Beach, although I did think that the special ed guy, which I think we've used.
Jeffrey's done support for us in the past.
Yeah, he's done, he worked for it before, and I think he's on GoPro, is that correct?
Excellent work actually is.
So from that perspective, the special ed stuff, I think that's probably a pretty good fit. Those are my thoughts.
Well, you know, many districts use more than one council, they're different things, so it is an option to use, for example, if you're talking about Harris Beach for special ed, using them for special ed and using the other firm for everything else, that's, that's an option that's available.
And we're going to continue on using Hodgson-Russ for, for current ETA discussions.
That's my recommendation, yeah.
In your, in your discussions with Harris Beach, did you get the impression that they were, that they weren't going to use Tracy Woodley?
I got the impression, well, there's only two of the, two lead partners in that office. There's Weiss who does special education, and I think he's pretty tied up with special education stuff, he does it for everybody. And then there was Tracy handling everybody else, and it, it appeared that we would quickly be flopped out to associate associates, and that was my take on it, they didn't quite say that, but.
I think because we're a smaller district, it would naturally flow to an associate-level coverage, which might not necessarily fit, fit our needs.
We have the same, we're a smaller district, we have the same issues as everyone else, so I don't think we deserve any less attention.
And Ron Mendrick said that he would be the point person for us, is that right, from Harder Seacrest?
He'd be the point person, and there wouldn't be any individuals other than associates or whatnot.
He didn't talk like that, he said if there's special expertise needs, I guess like special ed or something else, he would, he would, he has people that do the special things, and I think any person does that way, if they have specialty, they would call them or specialties for that, but the day-to-day things, he could do that, would do that.
All right, so we have some, 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 there's a, 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 there's I certainly have some possibility that there's a Garrison trial calls for the school district to use it.
Yeah, we're some pretty good school districts. Somewhere around Rochester, he's, he's ran a general college, and some other places, so he seems pretty well qualified.
Does Bosie's offer any services?
Well, they do, and we looked at that, and we discussed that with all the people we met with, and kind of the consensus was that there's a lot of overlap between what they do and what Bosie's does, and it's not often helpful. I mean, although it looks like you're, might be achieving some cost savings, it generally doesn't work out too well. But, but there again, you know, all this can be revisited in July, and I think we should propose something now and then see how it works. And then if, for some reason, it's not working, or we're not saving enough money, you know, we can make changes.
I haven't had time to review. I wasn't sent anything on this, so I'd like to have time to review it. Whatever your research was, whatever you came up with, I appreciate it. You can send that to me, so I can research it before I make a decision.
I would agree with that, it sounds like there's been a lot of information among certain board members, and that the entire board has been advised of that. I know Andy Breger has to be involved, and I have not heard anything from him. I guess I have another thing, too, that I look at it as, as you've discussed earlier, we always want to hire the best. And I found out Hodgson Russ has got the best reputation in the state, not just Western New York, in the state. You talk about controls, the controls are there, but we don't reduce the controls, our fees wouldn't be anything what they were. And I think it would be a lot better to keep Hodgson Russ, come up with a budget, and then the budget amount is what we have to work with. There's a lot of stuff that we, we, the board, have gone off to the attorneys and asked them to do things for us more, and there's been no reason for it, it's something. But the negotiations, superintendent and the board did that for years and years now. So the president for wants an attorney to represent. There's some costs, and I, five years that I've been on the board, I guess I'd like to ask Lisa, what are our fees? We've spent hundreds, thousands because of board member problems, and we've gone down to probably ten thousand or something. I also know Hodgson Russ has lost, there is a charge. Hodgson Russ can do everything, they do the thirty, twenty-eighths. We have really no suits against the school, we've never had problems, but they, it's a change for the sake of change. Do we need, is it right then anymore?
Well, it's not change for the sake of change, this hasn't been looked at in quite a long time, I understand. And I think it's more prudent to look at it on a regular basis. Hodgson Russ is, by and done, the most expensive law firm in Erie County. And my thinking was, and my hope was, that we could get the same or better service members were copied on the email with Ron and Lisa, and Andy was there, who was invited to the meeting, he participated in the meeting, and afterwards he said he had no problem with anything we were doing. So my position would be that you're coming kind of late to, to the, to the process at this point.
And I'll disagree with you saying that all board members, I have yet been told of any meeting you had involved an attorney. I have emails on that, I haven't gotten that.
Several, those were publicly, were they, publicly noticed?
Yeah, it takes two to three months, I put one meeting, I know Andy put the one up to be at the meeting. You say he was there, he wanted to know all of it, asked interviewing, selecting four law firms, having interviews. I guess I'd like to see the questions you asked these guys, these attorneys, these different law firms.
I don't really need to know that kind of detail. I mean, the, we did have two people on the audit committee, on this committee to do that, just as the other committees audit and everything else, they have, do need to discharge to, to understand the options and make selections. For example, you were on the audit committee, you recommended Toski and Chaper to come back, and we went with your recommendation, because you were there for the discussions and made that recommendation.
I'm on the audit committee, and everything we decided was emailed to, to, and I've got a board number, I have not seen any from either of them.
We've had-
I guess the bottom line would still come out, that Hodgson Russ has the best reputation. They are the best law firm, and the audit should look different, and maybe, let's come up with the amount of money we want to spend, go from there. And to do something right now is ridiculous. Now, you also said the people negotiating, remember, and the reason I have this firm plus another firm? I guess I'd like to see this paperwork first. I'd like to see the same thing, the same courtesy that I've given to everyone here, and make sure that you received it from the audit committee, I'd like to see the paperwork on that. And to be asked to make a decision tonight without that paperwork, you know?
There isn't any paperwork, Pat, unless you agree with what I like.
I'd like to see one question answered, I'd like to see the same. You know, you're saying forty percent-
Can you over bill rates?
I'd like to see that these attorneys can do the same, and they're not going out for clarity, something else, you know, or something else.
Do you over bill rates, Collins?
I do, I have packets from both accounts, I want to know.
And if you think I'll look at them tonight and make a decision tonight, I'm just not gonna happen.
Well, as I said, this has been ongoing for a couple of months.
If it's been ongoing a couple of months, why wouldn't we notify the last couple of months?
You wouldn't notify.
Wasn't, they haven't.
And if you were that interested, you could have taken one, you'd be no problem with that.
Well, if you never told anyone you were having interviews.
It was not accurate. It was discussed in a couple of meetings that this was going on, and Andy was the only one who asked to be included in the process.
At one meeting, it was discussed, and they asked after that to be emailed, that's the last I heard from.
Did you ask to participate in any of the meetings?
When it was brought up, I did, I did not ask, but I expect them to be kept informed, to be asked, both tonight, on something about replacing the attorney, who's been very good in the school district. And again, we have never had problems with, we've never had litigation problems with this law, for the thirty, twenty-eighths, anything we've asked, we just don't, we just don't, we just, we just don't find a job. It didn't-
And we're trying to figure out how to close our budget gap next year, so we're trying to look for cost saving work, and this is a good opportunity.
Again, I knew you were talking about savings of fourteen percent, what year did you use? What, the money didn't-
It's not a year's bill rates.
Harvey?
It's not a year's based on bill rates.
You know, it's just coming up, I think you're saying fourteen percent. Not that you say you give what you pay for. If you want to hire the best, I think Hodgson Russ is-
All right, if, if, if you really wanna look at it, then I believe we have extra copies of those. Colin, we can provide those to you and Brian, if you have issues with it, and we'll, we're having another meeting, we're having a working session December first or so, we can have a vote on it at that point. Is that okay, Colin? That's your, your committee?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay. All right, but currently, what is your, what is your recommendation, just so that Pat and Brian can make their, do research on it?
Either, either firm is, is fine for all services, or if we wanted to break it up, and perhaps use Jeff Weiss to do special ed, and have the other, Harder Seacrest do everything else, that would, that would be fine.
All right, so that's your recommendation, is Weiss for special ed, Harder Seacrest for everything else, and keep Hodgson Russ for ETA contract.
Contract, yes.
All right. Okay. So you guys get copies of that? Mike, you need a copy, provide that, and we'll have discussion there to begin. Okay? Anybody else have some more things? All right, so we were talking about a December one workshop, working session, and that's scheduled for seven o'clock on the first. We'll go with that, I'm, I'm, I'm getting rid of the problems there, but no, that's okay. We'll stick to that date, and that. Anybody else have anything else? Okay. With that, I make a motion for the Board of Education to enter an executive session to discuss possible litigation and ETA contract negotiations and ETA, ETA retirement incentive proposal.
Okay.
Discussion, file paper, tie, opposed, sessions, motion carries. Thank you for coming, everyone.